Yeah.
Mr. DiBiaseo?
Yes.
Dr. Nera?
Yes.
Ms. Menard? Mr. Beegan?
Here.
Mr. Pacheco?
Here.
They're calling us to Massachusetts Chair of Board, Jeff. Section twenty have a heading member of the public meeting. One of you may report in this public meeting. A member of the public who wishes to record a meeting was first to the chair must imply with a reasonable request regarding audio or video. Established by the chair is not intended to be. Anyone else to record it? I'm not. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands foundation, under God, universal, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Maddow's on there.
Mr. Reynolds is on there.
He's on there.
He's nodding.
Chase.
For the committee's information, we have Mrs. Stephanie Wenshaw in tonight as our recording secretary. As of late, it's still on vacation and our backup recording secretary decided to have a car accident last night. Not your fault. She's dangerous. So we are having seventy.
Need a motion to approve the July sixteen. Your second. All in favor? Aye. Code. Same state. Do we have anybody for citizen tip? We're not done finishing. We have none. Twenty-one other matters. We have MSBA school building meeting update.
So tonight, Mr. Dwight, Dwight is here with us and I asked him to come tonight since so much activity going on that we want to give an update because it's important for the school coming back in. How things go. Great.
Thanks, Don. Chair and the rest of the board, thanks for having us on behalf of the project team. We appreciate you taking the time to just kind of get an updating on the project. Opportunity for you to ask any questions as there is quite a bit of activity out on site. I wouldn't recommend taking a look now, but if you've been by, there's quite a bit of work to date. We've completed the kind of overestimation. So all of that soil processing that had to happen to get the building up from ground, that's been completed. Foundations are nearing completion. Most importantly, that side wall, so the ceiling wall between the road and down the lower level of the building is complete. And masonry is started. So you'll see the stair towers and the elevator towers have started to come up. Those are being put in at full height. So those are pretty much the height of the building. That's what we'll kind of finish out. And coming next week, steel will start to arrive. So it's an exciting kind of a project. There'll be a lot of activity in the next couple of weeks, particularly with school starting. The roadway from the main entrance down to kind of the maintenance area and down around where you come into the school is now reestablished for binder. That's how it will stay throughout the school year. So kind of the first course of pavement, because there is still ongoing work in the second phase that happens, we're not going to find a payback. So when we're done, kind of in the final condition, you'll have a nice brand new road. You don't want to give you, you know, something that's all kind of patchy and thick. So it'll stay binder for now. Sidewalks will start to go in for the end of school. The stairs, there's two stairs down from the student parking down to the new driveline. Those have started to go in. It'll be ready for the start of school. So it's a very exciting type of project. Community will start to see more of kind of how the building starts to take shape. Students will get to see a lot of activity this year, particularly starting with steel. The crane is will be very large. There's a big reach over the building because we don't have access from kind of the school side driveline. So everything is going to be picked from behind the building, kind of over and reached in. So steel will start at focus and it'll work its way south toward the water department. Crane will then fall back and then kind of the lower section of that portion of the building. And again, work its way from north to south. After that, decks will go in place, slabs will go in place, and we'll start to see exterior closure. So studs on the exterior, mason on the interior. All of that will start to go into place in the building and really start to take form. So just kind of par for the course of construction. It looked like it started really, really slow. It didn't. It started on pace. It's just things are down in the ground. You don't see much happening. Foundations start to go in, steel starts to go up. It looks like we're going really, really fast and then we'll start to get into more detailed work and it'll look like it starts to slow way down again. This is normal. This is the force of how construction works, but it just is a kind of a perception thing. And the steel starts so fast that you go, oh, my God, they're going to be done really, really soon. And it is really long process to get from when steel's done wrapping to when we can move into the building. We are on schedule. We are tracking on budget. So, you know, good signs for the project.
Parking was a big target for last meeting.
Yeah, so as part of the construction, you lose some parking, the parking that's along the driveline coming in. You lose the parking that's on like the student parking side of the site. We've reestablished some temporary lots up at the top of the hill in front of the building. We're extending that lot a little bit. We've established a new permanent parking lot also with the main entry. That'll be the permanent parking lot for the stadium once it goes in. But, you know, in the interim, we can use that now. That one's paved by their course as well. So what our goal was and what we think we've achieved pretty close was to match what we had last year of parking numbers, even though you've lost those spots there. So there's a number of temporary spots that are in place for just kind of anywhere we can stick some parking spots for pushing them in, making sure we're still in compliance with the overall order of conditions and permitting that we have in place. But if we can find a spot to get some safe parking, we're looking for those opportunities because we know how precious that parking is for the operations, particularly around the main entry and the restroom.
So just to the parking lot gain, what were the spaces?
Yeah, we were able to gain back a couple of spaces in student parking. We were able to gain back a couple of spaces out in the temporary lot in the front of the building. It looks like we were able to gain a couple of spots down near the gym, you know, that lower corner, 1451. So, yes, it's an ongoing process. We always come in, tell Brian good news, and he tells us to get better and we go back and try to do better. So.
I saw them one day walking around, looking at the market, and I saw them all scratching their heads. So they're really working hard trying to figure out where to park cars. So they're doing a great job.
Our goal is just always to under promise and under deliver. We hope to do that all the time. It's inevitable that we won't get there every time, but hopefully we can always deliver. You know, enough to keep operational. The lines of communication with the school has been great. We understand the needs. We're for resolutions for issues that come up over the course of not only the summer but the school year. So it's been a good process and staying on top of things.
And one more thing, Chairman, we have a project update. So on Monday, we're going to have a discussion of the increase of the project funding agreement. That'll be happening with the building committee to bring the 2934. When the building committee decides the increases we're footage that the MSBA has given us, we have. We are.
If you want to explain it, Greg, you can a little bit of that I can.
Yeah, so.
I understand it.
So, so as many of you heard at the groundbreaking, there was an increase in funding for a number of projects throughout the state to help mitigate the inflation that we saw over the last two to three years. So some projects were eligible, some projects spent a little bit. In your case, you're one of the higher awarded projects. Most of it is due to square footage, right? Your bigger projects. So the way the MSBA did that was they increased the reimbursement that you get per square foot. They played around with a couple of caps that kind of limit your reimbursement and they increase that dollars per square foot that you're eligible for. So what that really results in is about $22 million in increased funding for the project. It's great. In addition to that, about a year ago, the MSBA changed one of its longstanding rules for third party funding. So in the past, if you got, in your case, a capital skills grant like you did, that had $2 million for construction, if you spent that $2 million on construction, the MSBA would take back their portion of that money. So in your case, the $2 million or more, you would probably net somewhere in the range of $200,000 because of your high reimbursement rate, right? They would take back their portion. Given the inflationary conditions within the escalation that construction was in prior to this increase in project funding, they moved that rule. So you're able to apply that capital skills grant to the project without being penalties. So that's another $2 million that Diamond was awarded in fiscal '24 and '25 that's able to be spent on the project without penalty from the MSBA. That said, the project was approved at a fixed budget. That was voted on by the communities and that budget was $293,479 and then changed that. In order to increase that and spend those additional dollars or at least some of those additional dollars, you do have to ask to go increase the project funding agreement. The MSBA obviously has awarded these extra dollars. So money's coming to MSBA in a way. This gives the district the opportunity to put in some of the work that we've currently hesitated out of the project initially. If you remember, when we got to the end of design development, the construction manager came on board, we had a gap of about $50 million. We were able to narrow that quite drastically and get us back in budget. There is now some additional funds to put back some of those things. Obviously, given that we are doing construction, many of them aren't possible to do, but we have established a list to review with building committee on potential things that could be added back in. That all in list only comes to about 11.7 million, a little over that. So, you know, it's not the $24 million or so you might have the opportunity to spend, but it is something to put back in some of the work that was produced in that, you know, initial round value management. So we've established that. It's, I think, an item for discussion with the building committee to, you know, let them see it. It does do a couple of things to help in the overall project budget. As we talked about, for that overestimation in the back of the building was beyond what we had initially estimated with our warrants. We don't have extra vision, unfortunately, and so the site contractor didn't have to excavate more than that. So what, how that would usually be handled is out of contingency. We have enough contingency to cover that. But with the alternates that you have for the storage building out back, the field and the athletic building in front, those are alternates, right? And we're running really close on getting those in within the project budget. But there is still some risk. We haven't, you know, contractor hasn't fully procured that work yet. So there is still some risk there. So reestablishing some money back into the contingency would allow you a little bit less risk going into that and making sure that you could get those items into the project, even if they, you know, did come in slightly over what that original budget was.
Basically, some of the items that he's referring to would be, if we run it to ledge, which we already know we've numbered into upfront because that's why blasting's been happening for the last three weeks. And also the pricing that we originally had on some of the items are escalation still exceeding, still growing, and those might push up higher than we initiated. Of those items that will be brought up that we have, unfortunately, get spent all money because we can't put square footage back in our building that we gave up. We gave up a lot of square footage. As you all know, the ISSN shop was cut out because that was about 2,000 square feet. We cut out a part of our gym that we desperately wanted, but we took away 1,000 square foot there. 1,000 square feet out of our auditorium, 1,000 square feet out of our working area and other areas that wherever they can find square footage to save to bring out some budget in 2934 at the time. So they give us this money, which is awesome, but because we're this far already with the building, there's no way of putting the square footage back. So we are trying to put back things that we did take out to get the good budget. Now we can hopefully put some of those items back so the school can be, you know, benefit for it. So anyways, that's where it's very busy. It's time to discuss those, that issue. You'll be here Monday. You'll be here Monday to hold that with the building committee and votes will be taken by the building committee and then it'll come back to this committee once that is done.
Don, if I, if I just add that, you know, even after adding that 11.7 million dollars back, your original project budget approval that we went to the sending communities with, the district share at that time was 144.8 million. Even after adding that 11.7 million, your new district share would be about 132 million. If you then take out that $2 million from capital skills grant, you'd be about 130 million. So the numbers obviously don't get finalized until you're done with the project and MSBA fully audits the project. But roughly speaking, right, you're still doing significantly better after that, you know, large influx of reimbursement than you were before. So there is, you know, quite a benefit still to the sending communities financially as well as hopefully a big benefit to the district and the educational purpose of the school because that is, you know, really what is important.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
If there are any questions or comments?
You explained it much better than you want.
I, that's why I said, we need to ask you. I said, I paid the overtime fee.
I would still be digging.
No, we've got 22 million, right? We're after five. Don, please stop over again.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I've been notified that the people online are having difficulty hearing us due to the fact that there is no microphone in the middle as you see that black one. Right. So the request from the audience is that we speak a little louder. For me, it's no issue and I don't want to strain anyone's voice, but they're having a little difficulty between our competition with the rain, the thunder that's going on and the fact that there's no microphone set up there. So. All right, see if we can help them turn the volume up. MSBA project expenditures. For the committee and your packet, you do see that invoices have been sent to us there from Colliers and from KBA and from services included in there. All of these have been looked at and reviewed and were given to me for tonight's meeting by Mr. Kitchen, Chief Finance Officer. So his recommendation is to approve the MSBA project expenditures.
Brian, what's, what's suffix? Because it looks like Colliers is 125,357.9. Looks like KBA is 150,537. What's, what's suffix? Just so we put it on the record.
Suffix. At the end is. If you would help me, Greg.
Is it 3,500,000? 506,000?
3,506,411.20.
That's what I'm seeing. It's on the, the document, lock eight document, G702, 3,506,411.20.
Let the record reflect those three expenditures of the people.
All right, need a motion to approve?
Motion. I motion to approve the KBA, which is 115,537. Colliers at 125,350.79 and suffix at 3,506,411.20.
I have a motion. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. I'll see you Monday. Good weekend.
Thank you.
Right here. 3.1D personnel, Mr. Ben.
For the committee's information, and that's what this is, no vote is necessary. These are the appointments that are, have been for the, as you see, everything from the LPN instructor to the health assisting program. There's some summer counseling work and summer positions in here. There has also been, those are the appointments on the resignations. There have been resignations from our health assisting instructor from the LPN program. You see that there are two there. And for retirements, a long time instructor here, Mr. Ronald Sylvia Junior has submitted his intent to retire as a carpentry instructor effective the last day of school, June 2025. And certainly we wish Ron, much like in the footsteps of his father, we hope a very happy and long retirement as they hold very good competitions. That's for the committee's information.
Yep. All right, moving on to 3.1D.
We'll be skipping that. We'll be passing on that and coming back after the executive session.
3.1D accepting the gifts.
We do have some gifts that have been donated to the school and monetary gifts. The first one, do you want to do these all separately or do you want to do the recommendations as a whole? How do you like to do that, Mr. Chairman?
We can do them as a whole.
Okay. So the first one we have is the Dr. Martin Fogel has made a donation in the amount of $5,000 to the Diamond Bengal Education Foundation, and that will be benefiting the medical assisting program. The second one is from the Matous family is requesting to establish the Matous family medical scholarship to benefit students in scholarship homes from the classes of 25, 26, and 27. And with each of those years, dental assisting $1,000, health assisting $1,500, and medical assistant $2,500. And the third one is from the Murphy family, which they actually established this at the very end of last year. In fact, they established it the night before graduation where they want to donate for each year $5,000 to classes 24, 25, and 26 to benefit students who are representation of Diamond and are either furthering their education by attending college or going into a trade. The recommendation on all three is for the committee to accept and approve the donations as they are delineated here to benefit the students of Diamond.
You have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Chairman.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you on behalf of the students that of course donate, people who make a donation.
Next is E use of facilities.
We do have a use of facility request from the Diamond Special Education Parent Advisory Council, also known as CPAC, and that is to hold, use a classroom here from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to hold their council meeting on September the 12th, October 3rd, January 16th, March 3rd, April 3rd, May 22nd. And the recommendation is to allow the CPAC to use a classroom here during the designated hour on the designated dates and to waive all use of any facility fees.
You have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? F, out of state travel?
I've received an out of state travel and it's from the Diamond Soccer Team who is funding a request, first of all, they're requesting to fund a trip to a Division One soccer game, Bryan versus UMass on August 26, 2024, 4:30 to 9:00 p.m. in Smithfield, Rhode Island. Because it is in Rhode Island, it does need the approval of the school committee. That's why it's before you. My recommendation is that to approve the request of the Diamond Soccer Team, and they are funding this themselves and to attend on August 26 from 4:30 to 9:00 in Smithfield.
Need a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Gee, we will be meeting on that.
Admissions. That's the admissions policy and you also need a person on there, Mr. Chairman. This is the annual review of our admissions policy for members of the committee. You've referred this request before and the recommendation is for the chair, who's Mr. Jennings, to set something up during the week that you had indicated. Mr. Jennings, about August 19, somewhere in there.
Yeah, and speak with the director of the item, so.
She will be on board.
Okay, great.
She will be on board. She is expected to be here for that. So whatever date you pick, I will make sure that she does know about that.
Okay. And H, we have the employee handbook.
The employee handbook is included in your packet. It's quite voluminous. There have not been any major changes. In fact, there's been no change at all. This is the guiding book that teaches the now building, the faculty and staff can go to if they've been guided to certain areas about what does this mean? How do we do that? It is a good resource and it is used. And the recommendation is to approve 2425 employee handbook as presented. And again, I say to the committee, nothing has been flagged that needs to be noticed by the committee as the information is the same. It just has been updated from 2324 to 2425.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the student handbook.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And then we have I, medical emergency response plan.
Included in your packet is the medical emergency response plan. Many of you know and familiar with this as you see the foot charts that used to be in our building, designated what to do and when to do it and how to do it. The information has been updated with change of dates and any other locations or emergency contact numbers. The information is primarily the same. It is a resource to use just in case a faculty member is looking for guidance on how to respond to a medical emergency in our building.
Need a motion to approve?
I have a question. Now, a lot of the, a lot of the overhead photos.
I noticed that very different, very different from what's out there today. Yes, they, they, this was compiled before the field became looking like what it was to look like. So some of the information transferred from our last, you're right, from our last response plan to, you can't use it, I mean, you can't use the Pacheco field. You can't look at the John Campbell track. But the information of how to respond, should you be at a baseball game, should you be at a track meet, is still valuable how to do it.
Because even access to different areas of the, it's changing.
And that will be updated.
Okay.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion, mate.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Do you want to discuss the amended budget?
Yes, that is in your, in your packet. So the good news is, is that the budget, as was voted by the committee earlier this year to set out, has been amended by the state. It has resulted in a small net total to the plus, which is reflected on the second page. We can see the budget page. In general, you see that it has increased by $6,720 and it is changed. How does this work out to the communities?
You know, we got a first page.
There's only the one that looks like this, the greater horror of this one.
Yeah.
That's all. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what it is? I'm reading from that page. I'm reading from, I'm sorry, I'm reading from the page of notes that were given to me by Mr. Kitchen. And I'm sorry, and the actual figures are right there on that page that has the numbers. It's a $6,720, 6720 is an increase and it breaks down to Fall River with an increase of 2398. Somerset, an increase of 655. This is actually the lowering of the assessments that are going up. I say the increase is that way. Swansea didn't make out so well, unfortunately, sorry, Mr. Beegan. And, but the total that the school and Westport, $82, the bottom line is it's $2,793 will be the assessments will be lowered by, with the exception of Swansea. On behalf of the state, I apologize.
I'll carry the rest of them.
Need a motion to approve?
You'll need a motion to amend the budget to reflect the current values.
Make a motion to amend the budget.
Need a second?
24. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. Mr. Kitchen, who is enjoying some time prior to the start of school, he did leave this behind his monthly financial report. Nothing remarkable as some accounts are closing out and other accounts are just starting. Nothing remarkable.
Moving on to expenditures.
On the expenditures, again, been left behind by Mr. Kitchen. The expenditures in excess of $10,000, the figures are there. We just voted, we just voted the suffix, the Castle Booth, Colliers, Yankee Engineering is included in that also of the expenditures. You do see the vendors that we do pay for, everything from rentals to other fees, YMCA, NEDT, D.T. plumbing, Commonwealth Pass, Department of Public Health, Dell Technologies, Richardson Sons, Three Times, Deferred Media, Renaissance Learning, Pro AB Systems, and Frontline Technologies Group. The request for Mr. Kitchen is to approve the requests of the expenditures in excess of $10,000. Do you have this for the board, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, correct. Any EDP with that? State, the head of the EDP is there for international education on New England. Okay, but he's caught me off guard on that one. It's just one I don't know. It's for buildings and grounds, so I'm assuming it's something to do with the part of Mr. Ben's group that he needs for building. I shouldn't assume because that's very bad. I'm sorry. If you would like, I can send the committee exactly what that is.
That's fine. I'll ask.
Well, Mr. Kitchen, we'll be back on Monday.
I'll see you Monday.
All right, need a motion to approve? All the expenditures?
Motion made.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Then we have M transfer funds.
And as you see, there are no transfer funds at this time, because anything to be done, you're going to get it in September. Anything needs to be done.
We don't pass over any agreements right now?
No, you can do it right now.
Yeah, okay.
I've already discussed it with Mr. DiBiase.
Okay.
So on the, on the agreements for the subcommittee, we did meet this, this summer. We heard from all parties and adjournments, and the position of the, of our committee was to deny the agreements of the Director of Guidance and Admissions.
Any questions or comments? You have official vote?
You have a vote.
All right. We're gonna need a motion to deny the agreements of the Director of Guidance and Admissions.
Yeah, S Y two thousand twenty four, that's true.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose? And the House Building Subcommittee update?
In your packet are two pages, and I believe that the stars is online. If there are any questions in order to, there's nothing really to report on. Mr. DiBiase may have a question about one, yes. Mrs. Torres, can you hear us at all?
Yes, I can.
Hi, Maria. Hope you have a good summer. Maria, is the foundation in the school that will, the students, that's the house that the students will be building this fall?
Yes, the foundation has been in for a couple of weeks now, and we have the homeowner's insurance policy. I have forwarded that to Mr. Kitchen, and we're almost as soon as we're back in session.
Awesome. If anybody doesn't know, that's a house that we bought on this past, this past spring. And it's in Swansea on Park Street, and our students will be starting to build on that as soon as the shops get all set, we start rolling the students out there. Mr. Corolla is anxious to get out there.
A bit anxious about working there.
As far as the, Maria, as far as any new projects have come in?
Yes, if you want to take a look at your sheet, we're gonna have to take a look at what projects we're gonna address first and be able to complete. Last thing we're gonna do is to start, you know, a project here and a project there. We do have a couple of new requests that have come in from Fall River. There are two specifically. One easily attained for our programming and web, program to create a website for the Fall River Fire Museum. The Boys and Girls Club has some work that needs to be done out at their camp route. We will evaluate that, see what that entails. Somerset has two new requests, dugouts, dugout roofs, a new shed, and then a simple task for plumbing at the library. And then Westport has approached us in the past about their dugouts for the Westport Youth Athletic Field. They need a snack shack out there. We have some work to finish up at the fire station, the Briggs Fire Station that they requested that we do in addition to the work that we did last year. So we have some work. Mr. Bowen will be the only one that is going out. So we will have, he will have to take a look and evaluate all of these projects at the start of school and see which ones he can, you know, he can get done, so that we can help everybody out.
Really catch up with what she said.
I think she said that there's many, there's projects that have been added to the list.
Yeah.
And she's gonna be reevaluating which ones can and cannot be done. Just starts, I think.
I believe I did. Okay. So Maria, you'd be coming back to it in September with, I'm sure, the list, right?
Well, you have the list in front of you. What will happen now is, once we get back in session, Mr. Bowen will go out to all of these projects, he will evaluate them.
All the people on there, they just don't know which ones, once they get back into school, they'll make the determinations.
Okay, so.
For instance, there are two communities that want sheds. I'm not sure how quickly he can build two separate sheds alone with the students that he has. So he'll have to evaluate and take a look at what he can get done and what he can't get done.
The only thing I'd like to see, as the chairman of that committee, is I'd like to see us give me up the work between the four communities. I don't want to see us primarily in one or two communities. It'd be nice to, especially since we're building this new school, I'm looking for help from the communities. It'd be nice to have stuff in all the communities that our students are working in. I know we're building a house in Swansea, but Somerset, I'd like to see some of the items for it. And I see Westport has some in there as well that we're evaluating. So just would like to see us give me up the work, not just leave everything in the city or.
No, absolutely not. That's not, that's never our intention.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to P, LPN Subcommittee Report, Mr. Beagan?
We had a meeting of the LPN Subcommittee over a week ago regarding the current status of affairs with our LPN program. It seems we run into a shortage of instructors between resignations, reallocations to other areas, and combined with our inability to get qualified instructors in-house. We're running into a situation where we're not going to be able to provide instruction to some of the LPN programs we have had scheduled to the level that we want to be, to the level that's required for that matter. What we had opted to do, we currently have a part-time LPN program that has completed their first years, part-time day program, they've completed their first year, they're going into their second year. Our goal is to maintain that program, make sure that they get their second years, that they complete their LPN. We also currently have scheduled, we had scheduled a full-time day program, which we had fifty two, I believe it was enrolled into that. We currently, we decided during the Subcommittee that we, along with our director for the LPN program, that we just do not have the bandwidth to run that program effectively in this coming school year. So we've opted to put out a suspension of that program, suspend the daytime, full-time LPN program for this coming school year, twenty four, twenty five, with potentially maybe doing it again or reevaluating the program later on, moving forward. So at this point in time, as a Subcommittee, we need to take a, we're gonna need to take a vote, correct?
Yes.
We need to take, the recommendation, we need to take a vote.
Suspend the full-time day, full-time program.
Right, suspend the full-time day program for the school year, twenty four, twenty five, as, as I mentioned.
All right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If we're, if we're going down from where we used to have sixty, seventy students, part-time and full-time, and we're going to seventeen, then why do we hire new teachers for the LPN program? Don't we have teachers out of left there that can teach seventeen students? I mean, what, I mean, we have, I mean, this is crazy that we're gonna be paying out for teachers. How many teachers are we gonna have, Mr. Beagan?
At this point, we had lost two. One had resigned and one went into the health assisting program. So we were down two, we were already in the process of trying to hire. But as you look at our program over the last, you know, number of years, I think it was since twenty twenty two, I think we've lost eight instructors. So we're at the, we're at the point, we're, we're gonna meet the quota we need to meet for the part-time program.
How many, how many teachers do we have now in the LPN program with the high rate?
Three.
Right, three.
And when they go into clinical, they have a certain ratio, I believe it's five to one, ten to one, ten to one, in the clinical setting. So I mean, right now, we're okay to get to where we are. I don't believe we're, we're hiring anymore. We just hired that new one. That one, it was not, was not hired as of the last weekend, we had our LPN Subcommittee.
I'm just worried about the school, which is a high school, is gonna be supporting this because it's three teachers, it's an administrator, it's a secretary, and we have a big budget over there because we're paying a lot of money for the rental space. So we're gonna be, we're gonna be funding out of a school, the high school budget for this LPN program. I mean, I'm just, I'm just very, you know, I'm disturbed that we're taking money away from the kids for an LPN program, and I, and I wanted to know why two teachers couldn't have, what, seventeen students? Why did we hire another teacher? When it's a ten to one ratio, I understand that. We still have two teachers and an administrator and a secretary over there, so why did we hire another teacher?
I think what, the director was saying, one goes out into clinical?
They both go out.
They both go out.
They both go out. The, Mr. DiBiase, your point's well taken. But if we're going to have this program come back, one teacher is never taught before. She will be trained and working all year. Another teacher has had approximately five, six months of teaching. And the third teacher is now the veteran, she's been there about thirteen months. It didn't seem, and it doesn't seem, that it's, if we're pushing forward with the LPN program and giving the second-year students their best education possible to complete and graduate, that we reduce the number to a part where if a teacher gets sick, what do we do? That we have the three teachers who can do it. Will there be training? All three of them still need to train. They're still completing their licensure. One is, has been moved pretty far ahead in licensure, as she's already done some work in a previous employment. We do need a director of an LPN program. That is required. When the program is done this upcoming school year, we are going to trans, we, the goal is to make it a continuing education program here at Diamond using these facilities and work on police agreement that we have to see what can happen. Of course, our goal would be to say if we can get released from that.
What are we in for on that, the straight to two thousand twenty six?
But the goal is to move the program, if it's doing this kind of, of this format, is to make it an evening school program, part-time evening school program over two years, using the Diamond High School facility. We have the facility here. We will need additional material to do it the right way, as the LPN program, there are adults, and they do have different equipment that the high school students are allowed to use. But moving forward and looking at the new building, it will truly become a community school where we can work out of that and not have this lease. The lease is definitely an albatross. It is. But the students who wanted to come to the program, hoping to come to the program, it, it's a hit, it's a loss. In your packet that I've given to you, you have the facts and figures on what happened to the program, and that's marked in red at the top of LPN three point one P. And behind that is the letter that I had constructed to give to our current daytime students. You know, there's some genuine fear that this program will go away forever. I much feel the same way as Mr. Beagan does. This is a valuable program, but there is something with full-time daytime program. And, and very honestly, I looked at the attrition rate. We start with fifty students and we end up with numbers in the twenties. It's a fifty percent reduction. And we're doing that with six instructors. So my goal in looking at this was to present to the committee the most efficient way to complete the program, retain these three instructors, and move forward with them going into a part-time evening program, working out of Diamond High School. That was my goal. Which I think would be advantageous, but if we're, we have to see how many students we're actually gonna take in. If we're, if we're gonna keep all these people on the payroll that Diamond Regional is paying for out of our budget that we just moved down, then we are, if we're only gonna have the space that we have here, if we're only gonna be accepting twenty students, can those twenty students paying part-time prices afford, can we afford to pay all the payroll and the other necessary costs, labs, et cetera, that's gonna go? That's something we have to talk about over the next year, because I agree, I agree that it's getting too expensive there. We can't keep LPN instructors. That's been a problem since Barbara left. And, and I think that we need to, if you look at the, the whole thing in a whole before we start saying, this is what we're possibly gonna do. We have to have, and I agree, and we have to have a plan, and this twenty four, twenty five school year that we're in, we have two things working for us. One, we have the time. And secondly, we have the people willing to say, if the program exists as a part-time evening program, we will continue to teach in it. There'll be adjunct professors, there will not be salaried individuals. So they'll be treated much like our night school instructors. There's a different pay scale there. What I do know, and I have heard from the community, is that students do want to take the program, and they want to do it at that two-year pace. They like the two-year pace because it's a little slower.
But is Bristol Community, is that a two-year program?
It's a two-year R N program.
No, they also have an LPN program.
Ms. Brogan, are you on? I know she was, I thought I saw her.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, does Bristol Community College also have a LPN program?
No, they do not. It's only an R N program.
Okay, I know that was one of the yearly three we're looking at. Thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome.
And, and you know, Mr. DiBiase, it's, this was a hard pill for me to swallow too, because we've gone through years of examining this program and financially trying to say, is this feasible? Are we making money? Are we not making money? Where do we want to be? We want to continue this program. We want to be able to, there's a need for LPNs out in the, out in the system.
Absolutely.
And it actually was disheartening, the fact that we had fifty two applicants, and we have to say, I'm sorry, we can't do this. And Ms. Brogan did a fantastic job recruiting, which is what we had asked her to do. She did a great job, but this also gives us an opportunity to, like Mr. Bentley said, take a step back, hit the reset, reexamine it, and say, if we do it this way, is it gonna work? And, and maybe bring it back home, get rid of that lease, if we can get out of that lease, I mean, twenty six, it's over anyway, but if we get out of that earlier, that will be even more beneficial. So it gives us the opportunity to, to really examine it and make it what we want it to be and make it fiscally responsible.
So right now, all we're really voting on, just suspend the program right now. Over the course of the school year, we can come back, talk about it, and make a decision.
Ms. Brogan and I just spoke about that, today's Thursday, I think we just spoke about that on, it wasn't, wait, it must have been Tuesday. I think we spoke about that, Ms. Brogan, about setting up on a regular basis, looking at, applying out, where is the program going? And how are we going to get there?
Right.
Who is it going to serve? And where are they coming out of? The biggest, and I'm repeating myself here now, but the, the biggest drawback is that lease. That is a huge amount of money to pay, that we're paying.
We can discuss that.
If we can homegrown that program, make it inside this building, or the new building especially, as I pointed out until it's there, it would be so beneficial.
All right, that'll be a discussion while I.
In the event that we do suspend the program, as it sits now, how many students will be there, which will represent the second year part-time seventeen? So we have five employees for seventeen people. I think that's what his point is.
It is.
That the conversation's not what to do onward and forward, equally the conversation should be, is there a burden, is there a phanatomatross beyond the rent or the lease with five salaries for seventeen people? What is the attrition and cost effectiveness with that?
And I, I, I agree with you.
Isn't that your point?
Yeah, when you take, when you take the part-time payment they're gonna be giving us, we're not paying the full amount of money that we charge for the full-time day. We're gonna be charged, they only have to pay half that because it's the second year, and we still have to pay the rent, we still gotta pay the administrator, we still gotta pay the teachers, we still gotta pay a secretary. It's definitely gonna be in the rent.
Can we get a burden? What is this complete burden to onward for the next year and the year after?
Breakdown crisis?
Well, totality, what is it, what is this? If we, we made a commitment to do away with fifty two, you know, obviously we might.
But we are, we want to commit, we want to commit to those seventeen.
Right, yeah, right.
We want, right.
But.
You would like, you know, that the, the cost of what it is for the seventeen students?
Yeah, what, what is, yeah, what's the cost of, what is our cost to, to educate one of the seventeen people? Seeing how we have five faculty members or, or five people on our payroll for those seventeen people?
I just, you know, I, I just saw the.
I just hired a new.
New teacher, that was my point.
Right.
I required a new, I hired a new teacher, if we're only gonna have seventeen.
I'm not even suggesting this is for-profit venue. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying, if it's costing us, you know, looking at the value and what it costs the district, the seventeen students based upon the numbers we have, five employees.
Can we, can we get Ms. Brogan to kind of give her play on that? As she's going to. Laurie, you still on?
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am. So there, I know we have five employees, but you go to, you guys are looking at it as five employees that are teaching the students. That's not what's taking place. We have to have a program administrator who cannot teach. That's according to the Board of Nursing. I cannot teach. I cannot go to clinical. Um, and the administrative assistant, obviously we need there because we don't have anybody else that can answer phones or do any of that. So we do need an administrative assistant. As far as the three faculty, it's a one to ten ratio out at clinical, but they also have to teach. We're in med surge right now with the students, so, and then we start up with two classes when we go into term four. So they'll be teaching maternity and leadership management, and this is at college level again, so the preparation is a lot more. So we are also scheduled for our ASIN accreditation visit in the fall of twenty twenty-five. And so we will need faculty to prepare that in order to be accredited in twenty twenty-five fall.
So do you feel comfortable right now with three faculty plus yourself and administrative assistant?
Yes, and honestly, um, as you know, Mr. Bentley had stated. One of the, the newest faculty that just came on board is agreeable to work in a part-time evening program, which is. It seems that that's where the plans of this program is going. So I think it would behoove us to train somebody and get somebody ready. Cause not everybody may be on board with that part-time evening program.
Thank you. I know. I think we should get a breakdown regardless, as Dr. Nera had mentioned. I'd like to see it as well.
Sure.
Um, just moving forward, we do have a year that we, we may, I will say, if there is a burden, we may heed it. Because we do wanna commit to those seventeen students and make sure they finish. And I will, uh, but then we'll look at it moving forward.
I'll have those numbers for you at our next committee meeting.
Okay.
Uh, and to start a discussion. Thank you.
Alright, so the motion is to suspend the LPM program, the full-time LPM program for this.
For this school year.
Need a motion on that?
So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Jeff, for the students that did commit that are no longer with us, did we find a replacement program for them to navigate their year? Cause if I'm committed to University of Massachusetts and the University of Massachusetts shuts down. I, my application to University of Rhode Island is too far gone.
What we, what we. I can speak to that once again. Um, so we did assist all the students, fifty-two students. We reached out to them and we told them they had an option to be grandfathered into the part-time evening program if that's the way the program goes. Um, we also reached out to all my local PN directors and several of them did come through to help us out. And they are taking, um, students for us, so they didn't have many spots, but I know one's taken six and the other program's taken six to eight. Um, which are the motivated ones that want to go. And then Quincy has also reached out to me as a possibility to take on more LPM students in their Plymouth, Plymouth, um, campus. Um, but they don't have any faculty at this time either, so they're trying to see if they can work with their RN program. To create something for our LPM students, but we are helping them, sending anything they need. We've done all the records and everything to all the schools that they want them to be sent to.
Excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you. Moving on to Q, superintendent report, Mr. Bentley.
Uh, you have the superintendent's report. There it's highlighted in yellow in your packet. Right, it also has some additional information behind that. On the admission report, um, we are, we're very good if you look at the admissions report. Uh, we've maintained, first of all, the goal was three hundred and eighty-five incoming freshmen. We have hit that. Um, just as an aside, there were seven hundred and, uh, I think I have that on the top. But there were seven, no, seven hundred and seventy-three applications, excuse me, for eight hundred and sixty-five positions. Uh, on your paper, you have, uh, one that's just the applicants, the applicant percentage, a charter. And, uh, chart descent, which is our charter, and the number of students accepted. It's at three eighty-five. And then you see the seven seventy-three broken down by, uh, community. Uh, on the other side is our enrollment report, and this is projected at this point. This is as of August the twelfth. Of where we're going with this. Uh, right now, we are projected to be at a grand total of one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven students. When we open the doors on August the twenty-eighth. That number will fluctuate with. And some students will come in or they will call our guidance department and want to, uh, transfer out. Uh, on a happy note, uh, very happy note, uh, we're still getting many phone calls. And we've had many, uh, students who have asked to transfer in as sophomores, juniors, and we do have one senior who transferred in. And I'm lucky enough to have Ms. Blanchett over there recording secretary tonight, who works in the guidance department. Who I won't put on the spot, but I will turn to, to say that that senior came from what school? You can speak, please.
We have two seniors coming in. One came from Blue Hills and one came from Bristol Aggie. They're going into auto collision and carpentry, I believe.
So the goal is that when a, a student's leave in the freshman year, of course, we have a good backup with. We're also seeing that continue with sophomore year with students who have still, sophomore year is a little more difficult because not all the shops are open. They can only go where there is an opening. Uh, junior year becomes even finer. Uh, because they lack the skills training to get into that shop. And senior year, unless they're coming from another vocational school, as Mrs. Blanchett just said, uh, it's difficult to replace them. But every effort's being made to continue with our enrollment being at full capacity as much as this building can take it. Uh, and we're looking forward to everybody being there. We're ready.
Alright. Thank you.
Uh, the other, the only other thing that I want to mention is that on co-op. So this summer, I'm very happy that Mr. Marsissim had out there our hundred and seventeen students. That were juniors when they went out there this past summer and they have maintained their, their enrollment in our co-op program while out there. Uh, and, uh, that number is gonna rise significantly once this school year begins. So we're already starting off the year with a hundred and seventeen students out on co-op, which is a good start. Uh, the very last is our opening day agenda, which you do see in your packet. Uh, it does look like a framed picture. Do you have this shown that I can see? Thank you. Uh, and that is, uh, what the breakdown is. As always, I ask for a member of the committee, if they are available. To speak to our, uh, faculty members and staff members on the opening day, August the twenty-seventh. Uh, just to wish them, uh, luck and commend them for the work they're doing and are going to do for this twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh, I don't know if anybody on the committee tonight, thank you very much, Mr. Vegan, you have just penciled yourself in. Do notice, uh, Mr. Vegan, that breakfast does begin at six forty-five. It's a continental breakfast.
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five AM.
I got out of work at six. I'm gonna do six fifteen tonight.
Mr. Vegan, if I had my way, we'd be doing it at five o'clock in the morning. Uh, but, uh, as far as your schedule is concerned, please, if you can join us for coffee and, uh, Danish and so on. Know where, know whatever your preferences are and say a few opening, open in comments to our faculty leaders. But that's our schedule for the day.
Great. Thank you. Uh, calendar events?
The calendar events represents what are we doing in the month of August and September. Uh, if, uh, they are there. Uh, I don't know if you have any questions or concerns about that.
Our next scheduled school committee meeting is set for September twelfth.
Well, you have a couple of ones and we'll get to that if you wanna take that out of order, cause that's coming up on the next meetings. Uh, calendar does reflect that. However, um, Mr. Kitchen, before you left, indicated that there are bills. Especially the bond that needs to be paid, that's a significant one, and it does have a deadline on it. So.
I think we can do that virtually.
That is, that is.
Just to take that up.
If, if you look at that, uh, past the calendars, I do have that in your packet, Mr. Jennings. Um, and you'll see that there's actually two of them listed. One would be, uh, the committee can do it either in person or virtual at your discretion. Obviously, September the fifth, it has to be there because we have a deadline right after that, uh, to pay that. So we couldn't do it tonight, um, unfortunately. So, and that would be at your discretion, how you want to do it. And then the regular meeting is on September the twelfth.
Right.
But yes, the one on the fifth, I did ask for clarification. That could either be in person or virtual. And will probably take a grand total of opening the meeting up, taking the vote, closing the meeting down.
Uh, you need a forum around at least four people.
Right.
Yes.
Three communities.
What time, what time are you doing this?
We, we can set a time right now.
Working that day, so, uh, at, at the fifth Thursday. Um, I'm available, um, after three o'clock.
I actually prefer to move our whole meeting to the, to the fifth, not the twelfth.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, but the, the problem is some, uh, we, we tell the contractors, it's the second Thursday. Um, that they would have to get their bills sent, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Um, so, because of that.
So do we have, what are we looking at? Three thirty, four o'clock on the fifth? Are you available?
That works for me.
Yeah?
Yep.
So it's a no for me. At five thirty, I'm free.
Five thirty? Oh, this is not be virtual, so you, you wouldn't have to come in. You just log on?
Yeah, but you can do it with my back.
Yeah, and you know what? If I come somewhere, I'll just block out from like three thirty to three forty-five.
You, you wanna do that or?
If I block out three thirty to three forty-five in my schedule.
Yeah.
We're good? We're good?
Good. Sure.
Three thirty, it's virtual.
It's virtual. Yeah. Alright. Three thirty on the fifth.
Three thirty AM.
Just, uh.
And that's virtual.
If you, if you, if you could, uh, establish, have a lineup, like alert us, come back, so we remind us.
Oh, yes.
Including that day. Yes, absolutely. Uh, and then the, the, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the, uh, that's on the grand forum. Committee is on September the twelfth.
The only thing I don't, I don't, the only thing I don't see on this, Mr. Bentley.
Yes.
Is, uh, the date that you have all the students and parents, freshmen coming in.
Yes, that's going to be, because of construction, you probably didn't make this calendar, uh, but we have that confirmed for September the fourth. Uh, and that's the one where all the new, uh, pa, students and parents are coming to Diamond. We're now calling that family orientation, right? Because it's not just freshmen, it's freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors. And we have, we have certainly that in there. Or you see on, it's called the PTO meeting. That is not there. It's going to be September the fourth, then it's going to be at six o'clock at night. And it's in our school, sorry.
I'll be, I'll be attending.
This is still a leftover. Excellent. Who said they couldn't be here on the twelfth?
So I cannot be here on the twelfth. Alright, cause I'm gonna be pushing it if I get here. I have, I have an event during the day.
Everybody else has.
To be, if, to be, he has five, five thirty. I might, I might make it, I might not.
Alright.
I'll be pushing it late. I might be late.
It's late, oh, admissible?
Yeah.
This is the twelfth.
Alright, can we start it at six instead of five thirty?
I mean, I'm, I'm still. I'm hoping I can be here at five thirty.
On the twelfth, we'll set it for five thirty and we can always wait.
And I'll, I'll, I'll pace myself, you know, where I stand. I, I can be here, I just, I don't know if I'm gonna be here for.
Yeah, five thirty. Okay, alright.
Uh, uh, that's night, Mr. Chairman, for the twelfth, uh, do you want a, uh, house building committee on that night?
Yes, we definitely want that thing.
Okay, do you want to do that at, uh, a suggested time of five or do you want to do that at five thirty?
I would say do that at five thirty and regular meeting at six. That would, with that, okay, so an extra half an hour.
We'll do the house building at five.
Yeah, we don't need anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Five or five thirty?
Five thirty.
I'm sorry, five thirty is the first building, and then we'll do the regular meeting at six.
Mr. Chairman, do we need anything else that night? I, I don't see a, 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 for the twelfth. Do we have any other subcommittee meetings?
Quiet.
I don't know.
The only that's meeting prior at some point is gonna be the admissions.
The admissions, you said you want a separate meeting for that, so.
Yeah, but we, we can, we set it off. Any, any day.
Nineteenth, I think, yeah, during the week of the nineteenth, absolutely.
That's subcommittee, it's myself.
It's yourself, it, it's yourself, it is Mr. Vegan, and there is a person to be named too.
Okay, alright. Ryan, you wanna be on the admissions subcommittee?
Sure.
Alright, we'll, we'll add Ryan to the, um.
So we'll firm up the date for the that subcommittee admissions, work with you on that and, uh, go find the participants. Thank you, Ryan.
And, uh, let's see, we have a recent going executive session.
So to not to general chat thirty-eight, section twenty-one, the character we discussed, shared in respect of like the body.
Alright, you have a motion to go to the executive session. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. David Azino?
Yes.
Dr. Nera?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard? Mr. Vegan?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
Okay, will, will we be coming back in?
We'll be coming back into an open session to deal with the, uh, agenda item that was skipped and may or may not be. Ms. Blanchett, if you would, please. Explain, Chad, if you would, please.
Yeah.
Session, you want to go online, I'm sorry.
Open session, in a call?
Mr. Jennings?
Yes.
Mr. De Biasio?
Yes.
Dr. Nero?
Yes.
Mr. Menard?
Absent.
Okay. Mr. Beegan?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco?
Yes.
We now in open session.
Now I need a motion to adjourn.
Well, just for the record, we will not be addressing, um, new business, other matters 3.1C.